Welcome to today's work session, an afternoon session. We're going to start with a presentation on greenways as transportation corridors. I guess Lisa?
Hey, how are you?
Good, thank you. Well, thanks for having us. I think this is a long awaited conversation with the council. So, we're here today to talk about greenways as transportation corridors. We have Eric Lamb that's going to handle some of the collaboration efforts and the planning, design efforts that we're currently working on. Eileen Navarette with Raleigh Water, she's here to talk more about the infrastructure with the Raleigh sewer projects that are going on and how that impacts closures, etc. So first, I think it's important to talk about the evolution of the greenway system. So this is the outline of what I'll be covering here today. So we'll talk about the, really quickly, about the ecology and how recreation and transportation comes into play into that evolution. What we're doing now for collaboration efforts through internal and external, some planning and design efforts. We'll talk about operations and maintenance and that will cover the closure section in the presentation. And then we'll look at some policy considerations that are in the works or to be in the works in the next year. So the greenway concept for the city of Raleigh was born of a 1972 study and it provided a methodology by which the greenway corridor could be established as part of a solution to a flooding issue. This is a picture of the Crabtree Valley Mall early in 1960s. In 1976, the city adopted a greenway plan. It was one of the first in the country and it included 77 miles. The main objectives were to promote strategic use of flood-prone lands for open space corridor, but to also preserve the natural characteristics of the land. These spaces were also where city public infrastructure such as sewer is located, so sharing the space with a lot of different objectives of the city. The years after the Capitol area greenway inception, there was a shift to keep up with the growth of the city. The program evolved and over time it emphasized recreational and eventually transportation So this is just a timeline of the Capitol area greenway system, year by year. The latest update was in 1989 to our, to our greenway plan. That's when we added connectors to the system. So you really started seeing the connectivity happen in addition to the main corridors of the system. And this is where the transportation component and a multimodal system started to eventually take place. In 1995, I want to point out that that was the year that the city code for requirement of greenway easements was adopted. And so today, the system comprises of 29 separate trails making up a total of 117 miles, mostly of interconnected trails. 63 miles of trail have been constructed between 2018 and 2019 and there is a total planned system of 240 miles of trail. In the past five years alone, the trail system has grown by nearly 50 miles, so almost doubling the miles in the system from years ago. This is a result of overwhelming support that we've received from our citizens and also elected officials. You can see on the right-hand side where you have the population growth and land area. And since the last update in 1989, the population growth has grown by 250,000 people and by 56 square miles alone. So some of the current projects that we have right now that are being either designed or about to go out for construction, you may see, well, the very first one on this list, this is the project that is adjacent to Capitol Boulevard. It's the section of Greenway Trail that has been closed for the past year and a half. But all of these projects here really do support this multimodal system and really connecting and making the greenway system part of this transportation network. The Crabtree Creek West is probably one of our bigger projects that we have that will connect and provide a regional connection. So I'm going to let Eric take it over from here and he's going to talk about some of the current collaboration efforts that we're working on and also some of the planning, design initiatives that are ongoing.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning. My name is Eric Lamb. I'm with the city's transportation department. And one of the things that we've done a lot of work on in the past few years is improving the interdepartmental collaboration. So my team works a lot with Lisa's team, especially as we look at opportunities for funding. For example, we've had a few instances where we have had some greenway projects allocated as part of transportation bonds. We also do a lot of work in the transportation department with regional planning agencies for the Capitol area MPO, for example. That gives us access to federal funds that we can apply to help supplement some of the city funds that we have available for these projects. And greenway projects in the regional sphere for transportation tend to score fairly well and are competitive. So it's one of the things that we've been fairly successful at in terms of getting additional funding for our projects. We do a lot of collaboration work with NC DOT, both on these funding issues as well as where the system connects to the public street system. So we do a lot of collaborations there. There's also a lot of efforts to collaborate with our other surrounding jurisdictions. Many of you may be aware that we have existing greenway connections today with Wake Forest and Knightdale. We're continuing to work with Garner and Cary to look at strengthening those connections and growing this into a truly regional and connected system. And then there's also a lot of work that we do with the development community through the plan review process and requirements that we have for incorporating greenway easements and in some cases, construction as part of new development. So there's been several things that have happened over the past few years to address some of the planning and design issues. One of the most interesting has been the design guidelines that were updated in 2015. We've also got several elements of the greenway system incorporated into the strategic plan and it's not by accident that two of these are part of the transportation and transit sphere and then also one in growth and natural resources. We've also been working to look at, as part of the strategic plan effort, we're trying to identify projects that are multimodal winners that satisfy and tick multiple boxes, not just a street project, not just a greenway project, but projects that have multiple benefits for multiple modes. And so as part of that, we've been doing a lot of work looking at the area around Newborn Avenue and 440, specifically around the hospital. There's a lot of interest in improving connectivity with the Wake Med campus. You can see the greenway system runs through this area here. And so part of the challenges is, how do we make these connections to the greenway system? And there's some engineering challenges that go along with that. We've also looked at some improvements along the Avant Ferry Western Boulevard corridor. And then this also ties into the strategy with the north-south corridor we've talked about through downtown because of the connection it makes from a greenway standpoint of connecting the Martin Street corridor, which as an east-west connector connects from Raleigh Union Station out to Chavis Park and the Chavis Greenway. And then looking at those north-south components connecting us to the north to connect to the Deveraux Meadow and the Pigeon House Greenway corridor. The city's done a lot of good work in the past few years to do more community survey work and part of that outreach has been to ask the community their opinions about our transportation and greenway systems. And you can see with the past two surveys that were done in 2016 and 2018, there's been an increased interest in using greenways as transportation. So there's a lot of interest and popularity on that front. One of the other things we've done is a partnership with NC State where they are doing what are called shout-out surveys. So instead of stopping people as they're traveling, they basically have an advanced warning sign that says, hey, we're going to ask you a question and they basically shout out the answers as they ride or walk by. But as part of that, we were able to document just how much of a split we have at some of these locations of how many of the users are pedestrians versus cyclists and then getting feedback on how many people are using the greenway systems as recreational facilities versus commuting and transportation. And these results are all fairly consistent in the 10% to 14% range for commuting. We've also been working with the Institute for Transportation Research and Education, ITRI, over at NC State and Capitol area MPO on developing a regional count program. And part of those counters are going in public streets and some of those counters are going on greenways. And so you can see where the stars are on this map, we've already got permanent count stations. And the count stations are savvy enough with the loop detection and infrared that it can differentiate between bicyclists and pedestrians. So we're starting to get good data that's now being aggregated into a larger statewide data set so we can understand what the demand is and where we need to be focusing our resources better. So in 2015, the design guidelines were adopted and this was one of the first cases where the greenway system started to get some refinement with respect to the classifications of corridors. And so it created new classifications and of those classifications, two of them were singled out as having more emphasis on commuting use or a mix of commuters and recreational users, the cross-city greenway trails and the greenway collector trails respectively. And so those that you see in the magenta on the map here, the Crabtree Creek Trail, the Neuse River Trail and the combo between Reedy Creek, Rocky Branch and Walnut Creek were identified as those cross-town connectors and those that had the most likely highest commuting interest and opportunity. The ones that you see in blue are the greenway connectors and have a mix of commuting and recreational interest. But you can see from the standpoint of these connections from the outside into downtown being one of the things that we hear frequently as far as where the most interest is. So what does that mean from a design criteria standpoint? One of the things is that as we have facilities that have more users and more interest, it means that we have to look at wider greenways. Right now, the standard that we've used for many years is 10 feet for the asphalt path. That will probably go up to 12 to 14 in areas with higher interest. We also get a lot of feedback about interest in amenities along the greenway, specifically water fountains. Some people have asked about restrooms and then signage. I'll talk about a little bit about those elements. A lot of people have talked about looking at implementing more urban solutions. And when you go to that, we start to talk about a premium where we're now starting to separate, if you've seen the previous picture, bicyclists and pedestrians are sharing the same space. In a more urban condition, you're talking about separating cyclists and pedestrians in separate facilities. And the trade-off there is, you need more space to be able to do that. We hear a lot of people talk about the Indianapolis Cultural Trail. This is a good example from Indianapolis as you can see the separation of the cyclist on the right and the pedestrians to the left. So let's talk about some of the elements that make a greenway corridor more of a transportation usage. One of the things that you can do is to add pavement markings, either with a solid yellow line or with a dashed yellow line. You have the advantage of creating that separation between users in each direction, but one of the things with paint is that it tends not to last and it becomes a repetitive capital cost that you have to reapply that on a frequent basis. Signage is another element that, there are some guidance out there from the federal standpoint of adding signage for trail systems. It's very useful in terms of reminding users how to use the facility, how to pass properly, how slower traffic needs to stay to the right, what the speed limits are. One of the challenges is that it comes with a cost, again, for maintenance, but also that when we do deploy the signage, based on trail guidelines, we have to meet those same reflectivity requirements that we do for streets signs on public streets. One of the things that Parks, Recreation and Cultural Resources has expanded in the past few years is the greater use of wayfinding signage and that's been very well received. The wayfinding signage has been refined and now start to look at calling out different destinations, but also providing mileage references, which is very useful for folks. We get a lot of questions about lighting and the corollary with lighting is that interest in expanding the hours of operation and usage of the system. You can expand those hours without providing the lighting, but it can be tough, especially if you're a pedestrian without a flashlight or if you're a cyclist that's trying to ride without any type of headlight on your bike. So there's interest in lighting. One of the challenges with lighting is, just so you, for reference, on our public street system, the city of Raleigh does not own the streetlights. We lease all of our streetlights from Duke Energy. And to go with pedestrian scale lighting along a greenway corridor comes at a substantially higher cost. Those fixtures cost much more than a 30-foot wood pole Cobra Head LED fixture. So there's that, plus you have to use more of them to maintain the lighting uniformity. So it comes with a fairly significant capital cost to install and then an annual operating cost that goes along with that. As you heard Lisa talk about the orientation and the development of the system, there was a lot of interest in this being a natural system. People refer to greenways as linear parks. And as part of that, one of the concerns about adding lighting is specifically wildlife impacts because there are animals that use the trails. When I first moved into area up in the Wakefield Bedford area, we had some old timers tell us that there were bears that were seen that would roam along the river sometimes. So wildlife impacts is a real thing in the dark. There's also a concern about privacy impacts, especially in areas where we've already established trails as we go to retrofit the trail system and put new lighting ostensibly in people's backyards. We're not sure how well received that would be in certain areas. One of the other tools in the toolbox is to look at adding more neighborhood access points. And what this does is this creates more penetrations along the greenway that creates more points of access and makes fundamentally the greenway more accessible to everyone. It also gives us more latitude in those areas where we have to have a closure that's associated with flooding. And this is a great example, that's not far from my house. There's a bridge here. This area tends to flood in high water. It allows for a detour off onto a residential street with this connection here. One of the challenges for that is if we go through to retrofit the system, trying to obtain those new easements and make those new connections into areas where, again, this was a planned connection, but if you're trying to split and, for example, try to make a connection that's between two houses right there, you're dealing with new easements, landscape impacts, privacy concerns, and so that's going to be one of the challenges of creating those new connections. And at this point, I'll turn it back to Lisa to talk about the master plan update.
So currently, we do have an update to our greenway master plan that's ongoing. We have a really wide range of steering committee members that represent a lot of different areas. We also are, we have a review team internally from representatives from all departments, including transportation and Raleigh Water on that team. So the greenway master plan update really is to evaluate those current policies, update the current plan and make recommendations within that plan to respond to all the evolving needs of the users. I picked out some of the things, not like the large, big scope of the plan, there's definitely a lot of items that we will be addressing as part of that update, but I picked out the items that would, you would have interest in as they relate to this conversation. So we do plan to, through that process, look at what other places are doing as far as hours of operations, look at what, you know, best practices for lighting of a system that's similar to ours, provide design criteria and maybe update those guidelines and those recommendations that were in the design guideline from 2015. And also look at our development standards and see how we're doing things in relationship to the rest of the country. You will see many updates on that process. We do plan to bring a draft in the summer and winter of this year and we're expecting to complete that process by January 2021. So wanted to move into operations and management and how we provide that communication and outreach. There was a lot of feedback from the community in wanting a similar product that you see whenever roads are closed. So currently, I would say in the past three months, we have a live system, interactive mapping where you can go online to city's website and you can click on a map. You will see highlighted closures where their sections are closed, where there might be a detour. And you click on that and it'll give you additional information. We also, as we always have, whenever we have closures on site, we do provide signage and detour options if they're available. We also have available to sign up for these alerts and you could get those alerts through text or email or however you signed up. So this is a picture, I have a few pictures of just certain situations. We do have to close or have detours along our system for either a greenway project, a weather-related event, or infrastructure upgrades to the sewer infrastructure. This is a bridge on the Neuse River Trail. It's a before and after picture. And there wasn't many opportunity here to provide a detour around this because of the closed nature of that, of the Neuse River Trail. Aren't many options to pop out into neighborhoods and get around this closure. But that is something that we're looking, as we design projects, to look at more opportunities where you can have connections to neighborhoods so there's potential to get around a lot of areas that are impacted. So many, or I would say majority of our system is built in flood-prone areas. So you're going to naturally have silt and mud and things like that that happen as part of a rain event. This is a typical picture of a tunnel after a storm event where we have mud and silt. And our maintenance crews know which areas of the system that have the highest use. So whenever they respond to weather events, they will go to those sections of trail where we know we have to get those open as soon as possible. This is a picture from the weather event we had last week. It was a boardwalk that needed to be closed while repairs were made. So the Falls Dam does release water whenever we do have significant rain. And this is a picture of 5,000 cubic feet a second being released from Falls Dam. And the result of that, on the upper Neuse part of the greenway mill burning north, we get a lot of flooding. And this is a picture of a section on the upper Neuse Trail. So whenever we have release of water from the dam, it really impacts users within, on that system.
Question. Has that improved at all since the removal of the Millburne Dam?
I would say it's the same.
Okay.
It's the same. So I'll let Eileen talk about the infrastructure closures for Raleigh Sewer.
My name's Eileen Navarette. I'm the engineering manager for Raleigh Water. I oversee the Capitol
I oversee the capital improvement program. And I'm just going to talk a little bit about some of the infrastructure closures and those impacts and detours. So as you know, the backbone of the sanitary sewer collection system, they've been constructed over the years in low-lying areas to maximize our ability to have, to convey wastewater via a gravity system and minimize the costs and risks associated with additional pump stations in the system. These low-lying areas often run along various streams and waterways, and over the years, Greenways have been constructed along many of the city's sanitary sewer easements in these areas. As Lisa's mentioned, public infrastructure projects, specifically water and sewer-related, usually in this case sewer projects, are one of the most common reasons that Greenway closures do occur. There's several reasons why we have to close Greenways, and the length of those closures can vary greatly. So for example, if we have a sanitary sewer overflow after a major rain event, it's likely a Greenway would be closed for several hours to perhaps a day or a day and a half. If we have system maintenance that we have to do on the, on the lines in the Greenway areas, or we have an emergency repair that needs to be done, a closure could be a few days to sometimes a few weeks. If we have an infrastructure rehabilitation project where we have to go in with a contractor and do a little more extensive work, closures can be weeks in length, or they can extend up to several months. And infrastructure expansion or new infrastructure projects such as the Crabtree Pipeline Project, those closures are the most extensive, and they can last months or even more than a year in some cases, depending on the size and complexity of the project. This is a map of the city's Greenways within our service area. The green lines represent the Greenways. The pinkish-purple lines represent the Raleigh Water capital projects from 2020 through 2027. You won't see anything that's under, currently under construction on this map. These are future capital projects. And then those yellow lines that overlap some of the green and the pink-purple lines, those, those yellow lines represent Greenway closures greater than 90 days that we would expect to have between 2020 and 2027. Again, not projects that are currently under construction. So those yellow lines represent approximately 22 to 23 miles of the existing Greenway system. Of course, the Greenway system in its current state is about 117 miles. So finally, I wanted to provide some thoughts for the council to consider, as we discussed, Greenways as transportation corridors as it relates to trail closures and potential detours. First, the nature of the utilities work requires closures of both roads and Greenways in the system to operate, maintain, repair, rehabilitate, replace our system as necessary. Road closures generally impact more citizens, but because of the size and extent of the street grid in our system, we can generally find easy detours for our citizens and minimize those impacts. Of course, that's not the case with the Greenway system. We do provide Greenway detours where they make sense for our capital projects and where we can provide them in a safe manner for all the users of our Greenways. So not just bicyclists, but also, you know, folks with strollers, elderly folks, people walking kids to school. We need to be inclusive with that. When those, when those detours are readily available, we create basically Greenway traffic control plans, just like we do for roads that go in our construction drawings for our contractors. But most of the time, these detours are not readily available. So if temporary or permanent Greenway detours become more of a priority for construction projects, there's several things to consider. Costs of installing temporary or permanent detours would vary from project to project. They could run in the thousands of dollars, but in some cases, in some of our more rural Greenways, you could actually be looking into the millions on some of these to actually construct temporary or permanent detours. Property and easement acquisition for these detours, temporary or permanent, would have costs, and there would likely be additional tree loss associated with our projects, and construction costs would rise in many cases. Funding sources for those costs would need to be identified. Something else to consider are the impacts of Greenway construction and detours on overall timelines of construction projects and balancing those out with the general impacts to the overall neighborhood where these projects occur. And then finally, we should consider the equity with our merger communities. We strive to make sure we're treating all of our customers the same, whether they're in Raleigh or one of the six surrounding towns that we serve. And very few of the merger communities have Greenways in our sanitary sewer easements at this point, and we don't have any precedent where we provide detours for, for Greenways in those communities as well. I will turn it back over.
All right. So in the event, we do have opportunity for detour. This is a project here that's on Crabtree Creek. We're replacing a retaining wall adjacent to the stream. We did have an opportunity to provide a detour up to North Hills Drive where there are sidewalks and on-road bike facility. So this is a great example of, you know, the city being able to provide that. And then in some cases where the construction or improvements are being made along the trail, we can actually put in a detour such as this around the construction site. So we have used this about the system where we can. This is just a, I'm about to wrap up, summary of some proactive approaches that we are. So we talked about the collaboration that currently takes place inter, within the city and externally. I think we do a really good job at that. We, you know, parks and transportation do work together. We work very closely with planning and development, with even private development. Our design guidelines and how we're implementing those into our new projects, you'll see with the Crabtree Creek West project, it's going to really be the Cadillac segment of the system. It's going to have the striping. It's going to have a wider trail. It's going to be 12 feet wide. Our communication and outreach is always improving. Right now, we do have that online ability to go see where those closures are, and that has really helped the community, and we will continue to improve on that. Management of closures and detours. I think right now, our challenge is providing that detour for all the variety of users. So what may be a great detour for somebody that's an avid bicyclist may not be the great detour for the dad pushing the baby carriage. And then the Greenway master plan update. I think there's a lot that's going to be achieved through this process, and I think, I don't think it's an answer to everything that we're talking about today. I think that there are items that we can parallel the master plan process with, but the master plan process will have a robust engagement process. So we can use that engagement process to get feedback on some of these policy considerations. And so this is a list of policy considerations that staff has talked about through our strategic planning process. It will be included with the Greenway master plan update, and also lists some of the items that I think council is very interested in. So for hours of operation, we now operate daylight hours. So I know that that may be some low-hanging fruit to address some of the questions of Greenways as transportation corridors. Lighting, I don't, I mean, that's something that we'll have to vet out in the next year through a Greenway master plan process, but lighting potentially could be handled in more, or implemented in more of like urbanized areas rather than, you know, the Neuse River Trail, for example. So what do we want to do with our design standards? Do we want to start making trail widths wider, 14 feet? And some other design standards that were shown through Eric's presentation? How do we want to address closures and detours? Do we want to do more robust detours as part of the, the infrastructure projects that Eileen discussed? And all of this does have an operational maintenance impact, thinking about the funding that would be needed, the staff that would be needed to help expand that. And then, how do we want the system expansion? So we have 120 miles left of the system to build out, maybe even more than that if you start adding corridors and connections to the system. So how do we want that to look? And the funding that would be needed to support that expansion? And lastly, just maintaining the compliance with federal, state, and local laws and ordinances. And that is all I have. And so Eric, Eileen, and I are here to answer any questions you might have.
Lisa, could you go back to the last slide? Because that's what you're looking for policy direction on. So who has any comments, questions? Mr. Cox, and then Mr. Knight.
Well, first of all, I want to say that I think Raleigh's Greenway system is excellent. This is one of the things that really attracted us to this area when we moved here. My wife and I are probably part of the 14% that use the Greenway systems regularly and often, and I look at the map and I would say that we've probably ridden our bikes on just about every segment of the Greenway in Raleigh over the past 20 years. So kudos to Raleigh for developing the Greenway system. I think as far as these criteria for going forward are concerned, I think a lot of it really depends on context. For example, lighting. Lighting might be appropriate in urban areas of our, for our Greenways, but might not be appropriate in rural or sections of the Greenways that are far away from our urban areas. Design standards, again, whether or not we go with wider Greenways, I think depends on the amount of usage. The Neuse River Greenway that I know well is heavily used. Perhaps that could have benefited from being a little wider in order to accommodate both the pedestrian and the bicycle traffic that's out there. But in other cases, it may not be necessary to widen the Greenway. So a lot of it depends on context. And, and of course, a lot of it depends on what the cost is. Obviously, we want to continue our expansion of the Greenway system. We have another 120 miles to go, so we have to balance all those desires with also our desire to expand the Greenway and making it more accessible to more people within the city. So that would be my feedback.
Mr. Knight?
Thank you all for the presentation. I want to second Mr. Cox's thoughts on, kudos to the city and our staff for, I think we do have an excellent Greenway system. I think expectations are what we got, are what we're fighting now. I could talk about this all day, but I'm excited about-
No, you can't.
I know. And then I was late on top of that. But I'm excited about the future of Greenways. I really see Greenways as, in the system, as our public face in a lot of ways to the rest of the world, and what it does to the brand of the city and what stands out about the city. I think that is something that we got to continue to work on, to continue to make and expect that the Greenway system is going to be one of the best in the country. A couple of questions that you probably are like, you didn't know this, or these are kind of simple questions, but the Greenways as transportation corridors, is that a federal and/or state designation or not? And when we talk about the pros and cons of adding these elements, is that something that there's standards we have to meet to use them as a transportation corridor? Or is that something that we're doing best practices, best standards we're looking at?
So typically, best standard practice, but if it's a project that has federal funding, you do have to, you have to follow the federal guidelines for design.
But is that, is it considered a transportation corridor, or is it just a Greenway design that's getting federal funding?
It's a trail that's used for commuting. So there's no, the terminology that I'm using is not a federal, state, or local thing. It's just a term that we use.
And so how about from the state side? Is that, is there anything similar with DOT that when they look at funding local projects, they look at transportation corridors separate from recreation uses or not?
Well, they, they consider Greenway trails that provide like a regional connection. They consider those as part of transportation funding. Like they are projects that they would support with transportation funding. But there's no difference in the state or federal world of, of Greenways versus transportation corridors.
Okay. Because I'm just trying to figure out, are we looking at certain ones of our Greenway pieces of our system, or we're really looking, as we look to the future, any new ones? Do we, any new parts of the system? Do we want to, or are we thinking about adding these elements in that's before us? Or is it really certain ones that we're really thinking of as, as, as transportation corridors?
So right now, we're using the guide from the 2015 design guidelines, which we've identified these cross-city connectors, and those are corridors, trail corridors that provide connectivity across Raleigh and connect to other jurisdictions. So we're applying the highest-use design standards to those trails. But as part of the Greenway master plan update, we're going to reevaluate that because there may be sections of the Greenway system that need to be, that that design standard needs to be applied to that section as well.
Mr. Knight, if I could help with one other piece. In the context of this conversation, I think there's two elements. One was the council had expressed some interest in getting a presentation and taking this to a work session to have some conversation. So the first piece is, this is in response to some priorities that the council had expressed. The second is, to maybe help answer the question, this may be less about trying to create specific labeled designations or specific connections or specific standards. It's really going to ultimately come down to prioritization. And so you're going, you're going to get-
Elements being prioritized, or-
Whether it's certain sections, or you're going to get it all. You're going to get, well, this, these sections need to be improved, or these pieces need to be connected, or this infrastructure needs to be replaced, this part needs to be better maintained. When you go through the Greenway master, Greenway master plan, you're going to get a lot of projects. You're going to get a lot of ideas. So, and we always want to leverage federal and state money, but the bigger question that will likely come before the council at some point is prioritization. Which thing, you cannot fund everything that you want to fund, and so there's a difference between recreational use versus transportation. And sometimes it's both, but ultimately, it will come down to prioritization criteria is what this is really about.
And I appreciate your shout-out survey. I think it was an interesting, great way of doing it. I think one way, you know, it was in 2016, it sounds like the last time you did it. So I think you're looking at, really, whenever you do those, you're looking at current past, right? You're not looking at what could be and what, what we hope it is going to be. But, I mean, I think one way to look at this is, for me, they're all transportation corridors, and they all need to be looked at that. That doesn't mean you have to have all these elements of design, because I think that, as Mr. Cox said, sometimes they fit and sometimes they won't. But I think we all do, they are transportation corridors and they got to be looked at. So it's really the onus is on us for the users to see them as that, as opposed to, let's go find the users for these, because they'll use them if they're at the standard and the connectivity that they have to have for transportation. So I think we got to, we got to think of it that way. You know, for me in particular, we've got to get better connectivity to downtown through our Greenway system. I think that's something that, that's really significant, because I've tried to do it in the past and will continue to, but we need to have that more set out. And then the other thing is obviously, I'm very interested in the maintenance and repair. And so looking at the map near the end, that sort of the future, the pieces that we think of the system that are going to be out of use, and then the CIP projects, that's the same timeline there for the CIP projects? In other words, I think you said Greenway closures, Eileen, that was till 2017, that those in the yellow would be at some point out?
These are between 2020 and 2027. So at some point over the next seven years, they won't all happen at the same time.
Right. Is the CIP projects within that same amount of time? Are we looking at the same timeline for the pink and the green, and the green and the yellow lines?
Well, so-
Or is that just all future?
Yeah, let me step back and explain it again. So, so the pink is the utility's entire CIP.
Right.
And so the, and then the green is the existing Greenway system. The yellow is basically where the pink and the green overlap over the next seven years. So where we have infrastructure that we believe is going, based on our current master plans and our projections, we're going to have to do expansion, rehab, replacement, that will close a Greenway longer than 90- That will close a Greenway longer than 90 days at some point in the next seven years. That's those yellow lines. And that represents about 22, 23 miles of the system. Now, there are other projects that can pop up, and I didn't put crossings, short-term closures, things like that. I didn't put any of that in here so as not to muddy the waters, because those are much less impactful when we're talking a week or two versus six months.
So just as a, you know, it looks, it looks like a lot, right? And so I think that's something we want to work on and try to lessen or lower that as much as possible as we look forward. And again, coming back, figuring out with the bond and other things that we have going forward, how we're going to be able to get maintenance and repair done much more quickly so they can be truly transportation corridors, because of course, when roads go down, we've got to get them online quickly. And we should have the same, I think, standard for our Greenway system too. So thank you all again. Yeah, I think it's been so successful, I think the expectations continue to grow, which I think, which are playing under. And so we have high expectations and we're excited about the future of our Greenway system for the city. So I look forward to working with you all on that. Thanks.
So no one else can talk because Councilor Knight-
Sorry, Mr. Melton.
I'm going to call out gender equity and say, no, I don't think so.
I think there was Councilor Melton, and then Buffkin, Stewart. Can we, we got to get to the next item, and I know this is really important. I also have a few comments, so go.
I'll be brief. I have to say, I think this is a good place where we can try to find some compromise, because we're not going to be able to prioritize the entire system. But I think we do need to look at, when we are thinking about building out our bike facilities and tier-one bike facilities, and shifting focus to getting folks out of their cars and increasing bus frequency, how we can tie together all of these systems. And I think that the Greenway system can really be that thread that helps tie things together. So, but I also don't think we can ask people to use them to get to places if they're closing at dusk and they're not well-lit. And so when we're looking at prioritizing areas, I think certain areas are where we need to be looking at increasing the hours of operation and providing some facilities that can make them more useful when people leaving work late or something, or going to work early. To that point, you mentioned that there's already a process for identifying multimodal projects. What's the criteria that we're looking for?
So we're looking at bike and ped facilities, Greenway access, we're looking at BRT, bus stops. So we're looking at where those things all come together and potentially there are small gaps that may not allow that connectivity to happen. So that project would include filling in the gap, whether it's a short Greenway connection or short sidewalk section, to make that happen, to make all of that multimodal system work within those areas. That's just very low-hanging fruit at this point, those three projects that have been identified.
Yeah, so I think for a policy directive, I think that's sort of where I would like to start, is figuring out how we can maximize our system and then finding the right areas to then maybe start piloting the lights and the increased hours and how they're constructed and repaired. And then the other question I have, for the map that shows what's down for repairs, do we have an app or something that shows that? Or do you have to go to the website? Like for the bus system, there's an app and it shows, you know, the detours and the lines that are going to have delays. Do we, do we have that option?
Right now, we have an app called R. Greenway, and that, that app is supported by another entity. It's not the city's. And they mirror what we have on our system. It doesn't look exactly the same. It looks different, but there is an app, R. Greenway app, that you can get a lot of that same information.
And then with the map that shows the closures, does it explain why that particular area is closed?
Yes, and it'll give you a link to a webpage with more information on a CIP project or whatever might be going on. We try and provide as much information that they can link to.
Okay. And so I know that a lot of us hear from folks that get frustrated when systems are closed. I think you mentioned the one by Crab Chief for, you know, a year and a half. And it's tough, because folks that do depend on them for recreation or transportation, you know, we would never really close a road for a year and a half and expect folks to really understand the process. I think people can accept things more if they understand why, so.
We actually have.
Right. But to the presentation point, there are more ways to go around. Like the Greenway, if we don't have an option, like it's not easy to detour folks. So when that section is down, but my point was, is I think it's easy for folks to digest information, they understand the reason behind it. And I think a lot of folks sometimes don't understand that we have, you know, infrastructure and facilities sharing the space with the Greenways. And so when we have to do a major improvement or an installation, they go down. So I think getting information to our citizens and residents and helping them understand the process will be really important as well.
Councilor Buffkin?
Thank you. And a word of appreciation to the staff for this presentation today. I agree with a lot of what's been said here today, and I've got two additional points. One was, I know that in this conversation, public safety is very important. I'm not sure that came through in this presentation. When our Greenways are open to people at night, it's harder for our police to differentiate between people who are appropriate users and those who are not. And so I hope you'll pay some attention to that concern, and feel free to respond if you like. And I'll just share my second point, which is, if you could maybe get back to the last slide, I wanted to use your bullet on system expansion and funding. And Lisa, I'd love to get your thoughts on using Structure 106 as an example. When disaster strikes, how much time does it take to get funding allocated to the repair project? And I'll just tell you where I'm headed. It's my opinion that in, at least in that case, if we had a reserve fund available where council had already set aside money for Greenway repairs, the repair probably would have gotten a lot, would have gotten started a lot quicker. Do you have any thoughts or reaction on those two points?
So currently, the Greenway CIP annual funding for the Greenway program is $300,000. $300,000 doesn't typically do much for the Greenway system, because it's so expensive to do the work that we need to in these areas. We do a lot of reinvest, we've done a lot of reinvestment into our system through the 2014, 2007 bond. So with that particular closer with the 106, that funding actually came from the two-thirds bond. But that wasn't funding that was readily available. We had to come to council and request that.
Right. And how long did that, from, let's say, from the day that it went out to when council made a decision on the funding, how long did that take?
I would have to double-check that. I want to say maybe four to six months. But just mind you, that initial issue that happened with 106, it was as a result of one of the hurricanes that we had. So funding came from FEMA for the initial improvements. And then there was a second failure as part of that structure. And that funding came from the two-thirds bond. So it's a very long timeline. If you want me to timeline it out for you, I'd have to go back and look for that.
Hey, Councilor Stewart?
Thank you. This is great. I really appreciate the comments from my fellow council members and want to add that I really want you all to be considering a lens of equity when we're talking about this work. I know that staff really holds on to that, and I just want to lift it up here, especially as we talk about our strategic plan initiatives, as well as the work you all are going to, already started doing around the master plan update. I have my own preconceived notions about what that is. But in thinking about specifically, one of the slides that Eric showed, around 11% of Greenway users we've surveyed use the Greenways already as transportation, what are the demographic breakdowns of that? And where are people using the Greenway system more as a transportation corridor? I think understanding that, and maybe you all already do, but really holding that as we're moving forward and all this, and using that as a priority would be important for myself. I don't, I can't only speak for myself.
Yeah, so demographic information is available for those surveys.
Awesome.
And the trail counters that we had, the 10-trail counters that we have throughout the system, those are on different trails within our system. And we do currently have now, over a full year of data, that shows where the highest use is. So that helps break it down to where the commuting has happened, because you can actually look at the high use during, say, seven to eight and five to six. So you can start to really drill down and make some assumptions there. So that data is very valuable for us for future planning, future reinvestment, maintenance, grants, opportunities, and things like that. So that's going to be really valuable information moving forward.
Awesome. Thank you.
Okay, Councilor Branch?
Actually, Councilor Buffkin asked my question at first point, and I just want to lift it up again, is as we talk about infrastructure and everything else, we have to think about public safety and making sure that we're staffed across the board to address, you know, any concerns or issues. So that means making sure Greenways are accessible in case there is an emergency, that, you know, someone can be reached in a timely manner. So that's something that I know you think about, but I want to continue to lift up that we look at going forward.
Okay. And I'll wrap this up quick. First off, I think connections are critical. I think context, as Councilor Cox said, is important. I also want to ensure that we, what we do, we do well. So when you're looking for, like, direction in terms of expansion and maintenance, we've got to take care of what we have first and foremost. That's what get most of the complaints about. So I would say, when you're setting priorities, we really need to look at the maintenance of the system and the connections that they bring. The other thing I just want to mention is, I think it's important, and I would like to see this included in the master plan, that would be an urban Greenway connection from Chavis to Dix Park. That has been mentioned before, but I want to reiterate that at this time. And also, when you're looking at master planning, you know, there's a lot of redevelopment going on along Atlantic, Wake Forest, and Capitol with loading dock, the Iron Works proposed redevelopment, Wegmans, whatnot. These are really impactful developments that we need to be taking into consideration when we're master planning. So that's all. And did you get the direction you needed?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a lot of direction.
Well, that means everybody cares about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have a review of the business investment grant policy. And Veronica, I apologize, we don't have, like, we have really probably about 20 minutes or so.
Let's do it.
Okay.
Thank you so much for being interested in the topic before. Everything you heard about are absolute economic development assets. So thank you for your interest and leadership there. So good morning, I'm your council. It's great to be here with you today. We're going to, as the mayor said, talk about our business investment grant. Clearly, economic development is a team sport, starting with our colleagues you heard from earlier. And with that, I'd like to thank Beth Frederique, our senior manager of economic development, for pulling this very brief and smart presentation together. Annie Alexander is on Beth's team, and she informs our work through data and analytics. And again, cross-departmental work, Ty Williams with our finance department is here. I mean, in fact, Ty reviews every business investment grant application, which is usually about 40 in the pipeline at any given time. And I'd also like to thank Jim Green from the city manager's office for his continued support as we build a best-in-class Office of Economic Development and Innovation. And if you are agreeable, I would like to shoot through these slides, and then let's save our questions for the end, and we'll have plenty of time to engage. So business investment grant, it encourages job creation, retention, and expansion of new jobs, providing, provides grants to companies usually based upon the amount of new ad valorem tax investment to the city. The big policy aligns with the city's 2030 comprehensive plan and the City of Raleigh's strategic plan. The EDNI staff work closely with state, regional governments, and non-governmental agencies to recruit new businesses, retain and expand existing businesses, promote job creation and investment, advance the city's economic development competitiveness, foster entrepreneurship all the while, augmenting workforce development. The business investment grant sits nicely within Objective 3 of the City of Raleigh's strategic plan, which is to strengthen Raleigh and encourage business investment in all parts of the city. We do that by establishing a strong economic development program, utilizing strategic policies, and creating a comprehensive toolkit of resources. Current big policy was adopted by council in November of 15. To date, there have been 12 business investment grants. Some predate the 15 policy. However, the policy allows for consistent and fair application of the incentives, and city council must approve all business investment grant applications. Here's a list of the pre-15 and the post-2015 policy. And then criteria for evaluating projects. There has to be a demonstrated competition from other cities. There has a job creation and investment component. We evaluate benefits with our state and county partners. And applications must meet the city council's cluster and focus areas. Those are captured here. Companies locating within an adopted priority area for economic development are eligible for enhanced terms and amounts. And the current business investment grant has four provisions. You may be eligible for a business investment grant if you are a new or existing business locating inside an economic development priority area. And below are the thresholds for engagement there. Provision two is locating outside the priority area. And you'll see that minimum investments in outside are higher thresholds than if you're inside the priority area. And that is absolutely our desire to encourage businesses to consider our priority areas for economic development. Provision three, you have actually put your hands around this already, your first council meeting. We went into closed session to talk about a job development investment grant. This is a state program, and some of the provisions are outlined here, but we're going to drill down a little bit further. The job development investment grant is the state's signature economic development incentive, can often be the decisive factor in a company's decision-making process. And by state law, local units of government in a tier-three city are required to participate in recruitment of companies receiving a job development investment grant, also known as a J dig. And then the fourth provision of the current big policy is a headquarters provision. And you'll see the headquarters project has the same lowered threshold as locating in a priority area. Again, wanting to incentivize and make sure headquarters know that this is a priority on our attraction list. Compliance, grant payments are made only after new investment and job creation thresholds are met. Grants are performance-based, no payment if job creation and investment are not satisfied. Thresholds must be maintained throughout the terms of the grant, and failure to maintain those threshold levels result in a suspension in grant payments. We've outlined some possible next steps for you to consider. So if council directs, we're happy to review this policy with our area economic development partners, the chamber, the county. Look for ways to improve and strengthen this policy. We can benchmark against other communities, have your input and thoughts, and come back to you, either as a full council or in the EDNI committee. And with that inspiration, we're going to move to questions.
Any questions? Councilor Stewart?
I have one question that I don't think I've asked before, the big priority areas.
Yes, ma'am.
How were those defined?
Yes, ma'am. So working with Ken Bauer and the planning and zoning team, they look at census data, demographic data, there are thresholds around income that outline census tracts that are lower-resourced, or we would desire a higher investment. So through Ken and his team, we, this gets updated. So those lines do change.
And I would guess that with the census-
Absolutely.
-that will be changing again.
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions? Well, you asked, you know, I think it's always important to be looking at our policies, and I think it'd be a good idea to review this, meet with the chamber, Wake County Economic Development, and other partners to make sure that we are meeting best practices. Development, and other partners to make sure that we are meeting best practices. And if you could review these and then get back to us, perhaps we would send that to Economic Development Committee for further review.
We'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Just one quick comment. Ed, thank you for y'all's work. Welcome, Beth. We work together, Department of Commerce. And from that experience and background, I think it's very important that we, as a city, have as much input, as much, play as much of a part in, in, in economic development and job recruitment as possible. And I think this is, this helps us do that. But I think we need to figure out, we, we need to be the leaders in, in figuring out who and how we want new business to come our way. And I think we should be partners with the state on, when those big, big fish come about. So thanks for making sure that we are there at the table.
Absolutely. We couldn't be more thrilled to have Beth join the team, and she's already scheduled meetings. We've met with EDPNC, the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina, to absolutely make sure that we are not only responding to, but informing proactively where our growth is going. And we're going to look to you for some of that guidance as well.
And I think so, okay, Councilor Branch?
And working with the county and the state and making sure that we're compliant federally, can we also make sure that we look at the diversity of the companies and their hiring so that we can make sure that we have companies that we feel will positively impact our community?
Absolutely. And we already have some practice behind us doing that. In the last two years, at your request, we started asking companies their gender inclusion policies, their diversity statements. If they're known, if their sector, like tech, is known for low minority recruitment or pay inequality by male and female, we ask what are their policies and actions toward those areas. So we will continue with those questions and welcome you to help us, equip us with questions to ask companies.
And one question, too, is asking them about their policy of hiring locally instead of bringing in talent.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
Anyone else? Okay. Veronica, thank you so much. You sped through that, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
That was awesome. So, thank you. We will all now officially get a break before our one o'clock meeting. Please be back here right at one. Thank you.